Good morning. Today is Monday, June 22nd, 2015. I call on the Library County Commissioners Court to order. Today we have Bo Williams from the 20th Amendmentship. He will do our prayer. Silvio will stand and raise any questions.
Lord, we thank you that we can seek you first, beginning of this meeting. And so we come before you and we just recognize you as Lord. And we ask you to give us the wisdom from above that is greater than anything that any of us possess individually. So, Lord, with humility and with gratitude that we come and make that request of you. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On my behalf, Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, number one, approval amendment from June 8th, 2015, Library County Commissioners Court meeting.
I make motion that the second amendment is presented.
Right, motion?
Second.
Motion in second. On your favor, raise your hand, please. Five to zero. Number two, budget amendment to consider and act upon the budget you had to the fiscal year 2014 to the 2015 budget. Actually, there's more than one budget amendment, so.
We have to add a motion this morning. Any questions?
Any more questions?
Number four, on salaries and benefits. I know the money's not coming out of the general fund or anything, but it's another position or just a...
No, actually, that's been there a bunch of years. They added a position to help with the motion on that. And we're best to help with that position there.
Okay.
I move we approve the budget amendments as presented for the fiscal year 2015. Second.
Motion in second. On your favor, raise your hand. Five to zero. Consider and act upon the approval of the payee charges processed by the county attorney's office for the period of June 3rd, 2015 through June 17th, 2016. Checks number 162754 through 163041, and wire transfers 561 through 566 in the amount of $2,197,442.65. Any questions? Any discussion?
I move that we approve of the balance as stated.
Second. We have a motion in second. On your favor, raise your hand. Five to zero. Any search report? Okay, do you have anything to talk about?
No, ma'am, there's nothing... I'm ordinary, ordinary and unusual on this report.
Okay.
Number one, now, yeah, the one tax claim for 6815 was 27,000 or 64 was 62,000. That seemed a little higher than that.
They vary. It just depends upon the claims that are coming through. I have been made aware that we will have one large claim coming through. It'll probably show on the next claim spending report. I have a question out the tab to get further details on that claim. But it'll be one single claim. It's my understanding in the amount of about $85,000. And I'll bring that information on the next funding report.
Any more questions? So, let me know. Now, with our time clock plus, you hear report on time clock plus and taking action necessary.
I just wanted to bring an update to the Commissioners Court on the time clock plus implementation. As I mentioned in our last update, we had some barriers that we were dealing with and some codes that were being defined and those kinds of things. You'll see from the list that I've provided you that the departments that initially declined participation in time clock plus or provided no response have been contacted via email and participation was again solicited to those departments. I've updated the implementation list and provided it also to you in this packet to give you an update of those departments that opted to come on and those that have continued at this point to decline participation. Compensatory... Compensatory time with the straight time approval was one of the major barriers that we had before. That issue has been resolved with time clock plus. All of those codes have been worked up and added to all of the employee profiles. And straight time comp time has been verified with all of those departments. And all of those balances have been updated at this time and loaded into the system. Codes have also been created to allow for the auto deduction of lunch times in both a half hour and one hour increments, as was a concern for departments that often come in, clock in, and those employees go out away from the work site to work for the balance of the day. And those codes have been created, tested, and are loaded into the system and ready to go. Codes have also been created and loaded into the system to allow for emergency callback time for those same type departments that accumulate comp time as compensatory time for regular overtime work. But in an emergency situation or an emergency callback situation, those departments are paid for their comp time. And so those codes have been created and set up as clockable entry codes for those departments that will be affected by that. When we were talking with Roden Bridge to bring that department on, they asked initially that we obtain a quote from time clock plus for a card swap, time clock. We did obtain that quote, but after looking at the quote and discussing further the actual process of employees clocking in and out, it was determined that Roden Bridge would clock time as is already set up in the system. They may revisit that later if their employees have difficulty clocking in and out. It's a very simple, seamless process, so I really don't think there'll be any problem there. Roden Bridge was trained and that department was implemented on June 15th. And as far as I know, it's been going well, so there haven't been any problems there. We also had four departments that you'll see listed there that have a different work week pattern from what was established in the Falsing Procedure Manual and set up initially in time clock plus. We have contacted all of those departments, talked through the reasoning, and then continue and alter that work week pattern. All of those departments have agreed to convert to the work week pattern that is currently set up in time clock plus, and that will be done with their implementation. Those departments will be given ample time to transition when they're ready to implement. That kind of brings you up to date on the implementation as it exists today. As you're aware, we are currently involved in very large projects in the resource right now with the group insurance renewal and the ARS dataset retrieval to go to tag the first transmission by the end of this month. So, other projects like time clock plus are going to have to be rolled back until we... Because of the sensitivity of these large projects, we're going to have to get these projects out of the way before we can focus again on bringing on the next tours of time clock plus.
Those are the departments that refuse to participate. Is there a collective reason why they do not want to participate?
Many of those departments haven't given any real reason. Those, most of them are small elected official departments. And what we've generally heard is, you know, they're very small departments and they just don't think that it's necessary or feasible for the size of their department. And as an elected official, they believe they have the ability to make those decisions for your areas.
Dave, can we force these departments to participate?
Outside of the actual elected official, I think we've discussed that, the staff in those departments.
I think that the only way that maybe a political process that may only be allowed.
I'm going to say maybe. The reason I say that is because if you're looking at a political question, that's a really political question. I mean, I think you could say, you're going to use the time clock and we're going to get a time card and we're not going to issue a check. But I do think you still have the obligation to pay them, so it's kind of a... I mean, you're a little bit of a gray area and you can't... So, I mean, I think it would need something... And let's, we all know who the small elected official departments are that aren't compliant with this, I think. And, I mean, you're looking at it as sort of a political pressure type thing. I mean, they've got to be convinced it's in their interest to do it, in my judgment. I mean, it's a practical matter. Yes, you could, in those rules, I think, about getting the paycheck. And say, we've got to have that group time members.
Well, you know, we're running into issues with the leave and the sick leave and all that, and that's my major concern.
It's the school responsibility.
We had issues in the past.
Two.
Then we select those departments down without...
I think we need research and we need to put right down our line on that time clock.
Even to a degree of bringing them, or asking the people in, and their reasons why the declining or the needing more information.
Well, I would echo that. At the end of the day, the court is the fiscal responsibility. And so to your discussion point, Commissioner, there have been two examples that because of the lack of something like this is falling on the taxpayers. And so really being able to be stewards about the process and the why behind it, I think it's important to...
I mean, it may even be that, I mean, we have to emphasize the importance of keeping time records up. Because that, you're right, that we've had problems on that issue before, and it's to their benefit, their employees, to do that. Because otherwise, with other records, without records, you could say, I don't care if you say you use vacation time or not. We don't have any evidence of that. But the one way to handle it might be to approach them and say, look, you don't want to punch time clock, we understand that. But we need to forge out some kind of system where we're getting better records, time records from you about what you're doing. And, yes, there was a middle ground line. Okay.
Is that something that you wish HR to facilitate?
Either that or the court would...
What about that's my question as a court?
I think we're the ones that have to invite them here. If we're going to bring them to court, we have to invite them here, not you. That's my... Judge?
Yes.
You know, exactly what I'm talking about, you know, if you have that issue and...
I do have that issue. I have four employees right now. Two of them are about to go away. I only have two left. I won't see a reason why without the... I think I can handle two people.
No, I'm talking about what happened prior to your, right, at your position.
Oh, I know what happened prior to that. I'm aware of that, yeah.
That's what we're concerned about.
So, you, if someone is not seeing that now, in front of the others, would it be to have all of them...
I know. Listen, I've struggled with this for a while. And he brought it up last minute and I said, no, I can revisit it, but I still think that I can be okay with my two employees that I have. And we can keep really good records. They started the same day I did. So, I just don't see a problem with it. But we need to go on and look into it.
So, do you think an initial step, Dave, maybe giving some clearance about guidance of what we think? Getting us a little bit out of this gray area adds some clarity to the parameters of implementing this so that we have an appropriate conversation with whoever's declining and...
I think, I think you need to send somebody over to talk to the officials on the line and say, here's why we think this is an employee dishearing accounting and taxpayers. And I would remind them, there have been occasions in the past when an employee in some of those departments has left making a claim for vacation that the Commissioners Court denied because they didn't have any records. And that's happened two or three times, so it's not a... I mean, it's a very, it's in everybody's interest to keep those records. So, I mean, there's a, but I don't think you're going to get any response if you say, come and talk to us at Commissioners Court about this issue. I think the proper thing to do is approach them about it first and say, here's why it's important.
And we've not done that already.
We, as a department, have contacted them.
So, what are you suggesting that now, Mr. Department has already done the handbill, that the court will decide members either singly or jointly will go to those...
That's what I would do. That's what I would do, because I, they're my... Not all of them will show up. I'm not saying that. There are some that will show up.
So, Commissioner, to your point, there are 10, and I'm looking at the last page of the attachment, there are 10 that have officially declined. If we all divide up and take two, we can take all and at least be able to speak.
I've already talked about one.
Okay.
So, that's your...
What was the comment here?
I'm not talking about it. I'm not going to go over big somebody.
Just what you're about to say, Commissioner.
You asking me?
No, she asked me.
Can I ask you a question first? Can I, do you get any information, any records at all of those departments at all?
We get notices to dock if we need to dock time in those departments and get some email communication and those kinds of things. Those departments, it's my understanding, may pay their time in their department.
But if we don't have an audit process of some type to verify that, and that's what I'm struggling with on the counter side of that. At the end of the day, we report to the Department of Labor. I mean, I am struggling that we, that is an appropriate time card that our HR director or end or department don't physically see to pay a paycheck. And from a taxpayer's perspective, 60% of our budget, if not more at this point, is salaries. So, if we don't have appropriate checks and balances to the biggest line item in our full budget, and we are the fiscal authority for this county, calls a question.
I'm forbidding my opinion going through the next one.
Maybe in some kind of time record, other than just dock and stuff, I think is... I mean, let's play, DOL is not going to go to those folks and say, and shake their finger at them. They're going to come to you guys and say, why aren't you keeping records there? And they don't understand the concept of county government owes them. And I've dealt with them before and had a pretty good relationship. But the federal guys do not understand, because it's not part of federal law. They don't understand the relationship that county government, Commissioners Court has with the elected officials. And so they're going to come, the law says the counties, they're going to come to you guys. So, but I do think that the better way, the best way to approach is to say, we need to get some kind of records. And even if you don't, you don't want to use the time clock, we certainly understand that we're not going to make it easy, although we think we could. But we, you know, we just want, this is just an issue that we need to address in order to stay, keep our own records straight.
And I think that we would be in compliance with all of the DOL requirements as long as we have some form of accurate time record.
And we've learned twice that we don't, in recent years. So, we've had two scenarios that show us different in reference to our current timekeeping system.
We've also got a good part of the county on so far and have another large segment ready and poised to come around. So, we have made...
Oh, yes, absolutely, yes.
If I was an elected official, it seems to me that it would be much easier to be on a time clock system and have them keep all the tables that may be necessary to do all this stuff. You know, to keep your records on, when you're taking off, sick leave or, you know, annually or whatever, the hours that you work during the week. I mean, it just seems to me that the time clock's the way to go anyway. If I were an elected official, I'd be current, that's what I'd want to, that's me. Of all of these on this list, we're not talking about the actual elected official. They would not be, they would not have to do that. And so then you're taking off all the constables.
And they all have status, three of them.
Constables don't have status.
Constables have no status.
The goal initially was to get the entire county accounted for on the...
And to juvenile, is juvenile probation, are they considered state employees or...
No, they are county employees. And I have visited on multiple occasions with Ronald Gaines in juvenile probation. And they, he has respectfully declined, but has indicated more than once that if the county Commissioners Court chooses to mandate participation, he would bring his fucking on with no problem. And you'll notice that his is the largest area. Most, I think, other than juvenile probation, five employees, counting the judge, is the largest department. So, all of the departments that are left are very small departments with that one exception.
He used the word mandate, but what I heard earlier, you may not have the authority to practically mandate. I'm sorry. Mandating the...
Disposition.
...go and you might, is that something you'd like or you'd be able to do?
I would do that if I was the District Attorney, say that's that.
So, it is, but it's cautious.
So, when Commissioner Kelly and I were chatting here on to the side, and Commissioner Kelly oversees the HR department, I would be willing to volunteer and work with Commissioner Kelly and Kay and probably Dave to go through who has declined and maybe do an audit of some type to look at their current record system and see if we feel comfortable with that, knowing that they've declined. The court would like some type of step in the middle, as opposed to having everybody come in and then the chance of full participation. It certainly opened up for debate.
That's a good point. What was that?
We can do that.
You know, I'm like, I know juvenile probation employees are county employees. I'm not, I mean, we don't have quite the authority over, I mean, they're in the juvenile department. And it's a state law type, I mean, they are county employees, but we don't have quite as much control of that department as we do. I'm not, I'm not as certain about. On the other hand, there's a lot more employees there.
We do give their paycheck.
On the other hand, you know, if Department Labor calls me, I'm sending them to the juvenile department.
I think we still make out their pictures.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I mean, I mean, you know, you can get tough and say, well, we're not just going to issue a check. But I mean, realistically, there may be one employee in most of these offices. It's just not worth it. And in my view, it's not worth getting into people that we lie about. But I do think it's important to, about where they're on time clock. I do think it's important to say enough, we've got to have something. We really need to have some kind of record. Because our experience has been, we always have trouble when we don't. We're the ones that have to deal with trouble.
And we've been through this.
We don't want to go to paper and say, such and such an official has got the county in trouble voters. So, you know, because they wouldn't follow rules, everybody else has, that's not a good thing. We don't want that in line of paper.
Well, and the two departments that did hit us, they were small departments. And so this, this kind of, you know, thought of, well, they're smaller and how does that really compare to the big scheme of things when you look at the total employee count? Those are the two departments that really did.
Do we need a motion to allow Commissioner to get it?
We need a motion to reach this process. We're just going to do it. You don't think you need a motion on that, do you?
No.
So, we have. Get orders tabled until we get to talk to the department heads and see what we were finding out.
I do want to echo Dave in his statement that we need to be diligent to ensure that we pay any hours worked. We don't want to base payment of time necessarily on participation or non-participation of any kind.
Right.
Thank you, Kay.
So, no action. Treasurer's report to recognize the monthly cash report with treasurer.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay. In our Bureau of Cash, Emerald National Bank, we have 7.7 million. That's in our checking that we're earning 25 basis points. Tax pull is up to six. We have 3.3 million there. Tax pull prime is up to 11. This is the highest it's been in years. And that, we have 7 million there. So, our tow cash available right now is 18,199,136.41. Then in Cedars, we have 3 million that will mature July 30th, and we're earning 35 basis points there. We have 7 million that is the year Cedars. We have the option to go the full year if we desire. And right now, we're earning 35, and July 2nd, we'll begin to earn 40 basis points there. That's the update. All right, and thank you so much.
Okay, number seven, Walnut Hills Bridge. To your concerns from citizens of Walnut Hills regarding the plans for the bridge renovation or replacement and our request for alternate access to Walnut Hills and to take any action necessary. Good morning. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning. How's it going?
Well, the residents are here today to address two areas of concern for the Walnut Hills residents. First area is the Dewey Avenue Bridge project status. And the second one is the secondary access to Walnut Hills. And the first area, the Walnut Hills residents would like to clarify a statement that came from the May 11th, 2015 Commissioners Court meeting. The residents are waiting preliminary design and options from TaxOD and therefore have not agreed to any final plans regarding the Dewey Avenue Bridge. The residents would like to reiterate their thoughts and concerns regarding the bridge. The bridge structure should not be two lanes, but rather a single lane of sufficient width and strength to accommodate emergency vehicles to serve the 11 families on the west side of the creek. To avoid increased volume and speed of... To avoid increased volume and speed of uh, through traffic, it's critical that the bridge continue to provide a quiet, slow-moving and safe roadway for children and pets. Because of the uniqueness of the existing sixty-year-old bridge, the residents want the future structure to mimic the present distinctive Dewey Avenue Bridge. The supporting abutment structures should address the requirements to avoid impeding the flow of water. And the existing structure is to remain in Walnut Hills subdivision during the construction phase of the project, allowing access to the bridge parts to be utilized in the newer structure. And the second item, the residents are requesting specific plans be implemented and agreed upon by all shareholders that would allow for alternate or secondary access to Walnut Hills. Secondary access is needed in the event of a derailed train blocking the under, railroad underpass. An alternate route should take into consideration residents on both the east and the west side of the bridge. And we would like the plan developed as soon as feasible.
We have some representatives from Tax Doc here, and I'd like to ask Karli to come up maybe and speak to the.
I would like to describe what I just tried to add to it.
I'll take a text, I'd like to have a copy of that also.
Yeah.
Gus, you want to come up and maybe talk a little bit about what you just heard?
This will be like, I'll add that to the.
Good morning.
Good morning. I think, I mean, this is the first time I've seen this here, but um, I think where we stand right now is that we did the, we completed the two technical testing for the foundation design, I think about a couple of weeks ago. And we are in the process of hiring a consultant to perform the hydraulics design work. Because we need that information in order to design the structure. Um, and once we determine that, then we'll be able to see what alternate designs that we can have as far as the back direction and everything. So, um, the, the critical item right now is to get the consultant onboard and get the hydraulics design done. And once we get to that point, we should be able to get a preliminary design and then we'll coordinate with the county and the citizens basically on uh, the alternate designs that we can put forward.
And can you address the secondary route that was expressed?
Um, I'm not familiar with it. I think this is something that we're going to have to work with the, with the county as far as uh, whenever we, we're ready to kind of uh, to move forward to see what the construction, traffic control plan is going to dictate, but.
Basically, you're telling us that until we have a report of how, or what the drilling has determined, we need, we won't know the size of the structure or any of that information until that report comes in.
Correct, but the hydraulic support is really the key right now. And we need, we need, we need to get that.
Okay, so we're really kind of spinning, spinning around here until we get that report.
That, that is, that is correct, and when I checked this morning here, we're in the final stages of, of uh, trying to get that work authorization going, so.
When do you think there'll be a possible timeframe when we can get together with the county and the citizens to say, hey, this is what we have, this is the structure we're going to need, and how big it's going to be, and those kinds of things?
It depends on the complexity of the watershed and how much work that the consultant is going to do, I mean, and having to, to do in order to come up with the, with the hydraulics report. However, um, we may be able to work with the consultant in order to, to get some interim reports and work with the county um, and the citizens obviously to, to come up with or to have some sort of an interim uh, information. Um, so I'm hoping that we, you know, we could have something here. Again, generally speaking, it takes, on average, it could be a little bit more or it could be less, but it takes on average about eight weeks plus or minus um, for a consultant to complete a hydraulic support.
Do the citizens have any, any questions of Mr. Karli? Come on, wants to talk to us and tell us who you are, where you live.
My name's Jerry Michaels and I'm a resident of Walnut Hills. I just had one question. On, on deciding on the structure of the bridge, I guess your main concern is this, the, the water that would be flowing through, which is this hydraulic structure, correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, but so that doesn't, and I guess the question we have for the court is that doesn't have any impact on our desire to keep that bridge sufficient for bringing large, the vehicles over life or fire or, or building a house or pulling a well? The width of that, making it two-lane or one-lane, let's say, or one and a half lane, whatever it needs to be, the hydraulic structure doesn't make a difference on that, correct? I mean, you could have a, you could have a fast stream throwing underneath a one-lane bridge.
It has any, any impact.
But you, you wouldn't have a stream big enough that doesn't allow you to have a one-lane bridge?
The, as far as the one lane versus the two lane, we'll have to comply with whatever federal requirements are for that program. Now, again, as we get closer to that point, then that's when we have that, have that discussion with the county and the citizens.
But that is a discussion that we need to have with the county.
That's right.
Because, because again, as, as Mrs. Sparks said, one of our main concerns is we don't want this to, in our opinion, degenerate into first a big two-lane bridge, then coming in and making two-lane road with curbs, cutting out all of our front yards, increasing the traffic back there, increasing the speed, it, that's not what we want for eleven houses. And there can't be any more houses built over there, so we're looking at a maximum of eleven houses, do we need thirty mile an hour, forty mile an hour two-lane road back there and bridge to accommodate that type of traffic and speed? So that's, that's the, the main thrust that we have, the concern we have in that regard. So thank you, I appreciate your time, Ken.
Thank you, appreciate it, and we will.
I have a question of, of those board calls that they're doing, is that part of the preliminary report that you're talking about hydraulic?
No, no, those, the juvenile are for soul, uh, for soul sampling, I think, for the foundation of the bridge. The hydraulic support is primarily for the watershed, that water that's coming through that area, and that's.
Like, is that, are you saying that's to determine if the bridge or creek may be rerouted or?
It's just to, to make sure that we have a, a quick opening for that water to go.
We will address this issue and probably.
Do you want to come up?
Sure. My name is Linda Hubbard. Um, I also am on the west side of that bridge, but um, you referred to the requirements of that federal program. Do those requirements outline, does it have to be two-lane? Do those requirements for that federal program that's helping to find this bridge, do they require a certain width?
I'm going to have to research that. As I said, this is a first, I mean, I would like to be positive, so not having time to research that. So I need to research it in, in order to provide you with appropriate.
Ms. Hubbard, anybody else?
Right.
Yes. Would you identify yourself?
My name is Barry Feller. I also live across the bridge on the west side. And my biggest concern with all of this is that, personally, I won't speak for the others, is that we had a meeting and you were there, and you were there, several of you there, and I think you might have been there. We had a meeting and we were told that we were going to be kept in the loop. And we have not been kept in the loop. We've asked, I've gone to Carolyn's and stuff, asking for information, we get no responses.
Well, if we don't have any information, we can't give you a response, that's the problem.
That's the problem, is nobody wants to get this in.
Well, until we get the information, we can't give the information.
Well, when you make comments in the county commissioner's meeting that we have agreed to something, that we didn't agree, and you want to watch the video on May the eleventh, then you can watch that. You personally made that comment, we didn't agree with you.
What, what comment did I make?
You made a comment, and I have to get it on my phone. Uh, let's see.
So Commissioner, um, just in the sake of, of moving forward and progressing, so I'm hearing from Gus in early August, roughly, well, we're almost in July. No, 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 probably late August, I'm thinking we might expect some type of report, this hydraulic report. Um, I'm, I'm hearing from the citizens and so I'm, I'm assuming there's going to be a, maybe another recap meeting to share this report.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
We're, we're doing, we're doing that in full transparency and I think that's, that's the procedure that, I mean, that's a process that we're going through.
Okay.
The comment was in the video for May the eleventh, that about forty-four minutes and thirty seconds into the video, Mr. Kelly announced the soul sampling. And you were asked during this portion of the meeting if the residents had agreed to the new bridge, and you answered yes. When you go back and review that, I would.
I don't have a problem with that, that comment, it's because we're going to get a new bridge. That is not, that, that's, as far as the county's concerned, where are you going to get a new bridge? What, what kind of design we're going to have, that's up to, up to y'all and up to the, up to Tax Doc.
But I make a hearing also from all parties now, certainly from uh, and from the owners too, to be going to be included in this process of updating as the, as the information flows through, up through all of us.
That's what we're being told, but that's not what it feels like.
But that's what we're, that's what we're hearing today, am I not right?
That's what we heard in December.
There'll be, there'll be transparency enough that the owners along with the technical permission to be, to stand back to the court, be a part of this process.
From the get-go, we had that meeting some time ago, and no decisions have been made. We can't make any decisions until the hydraulic testing comes back. But as far as a new bridge, you know, there's two ways, two ways to look at it, that you can keep the old bridge and it'll be your bridge, not the county's. Or you can get a new bridge. Now, that's, that's the options.
Right. And previous commissioner's court, several years ago, there was funding that was, that was set aside for a bridge there.
Well, the funding is there available now to.
Was it set aside back then? What happened to that funding?
No, I can't, I can't. I don't have, I wasn't there, so I can't answer that.
But I think that's fair. I think, I think you're all here, visibly here to say, we just want to be kept informed. I think we're all hearing the timeline, uh, in terms of inclusive of the court, uh, because we all obviously want to support Commissioner Kelly and, and the residents as well. So I think it's fair to say that you feel like you need to be kept in the loop more aggressively.
More than what we have in place.
So we're here in the mid-August, and I'm just roughly saying that, so don't hold me to that. Uh, but rough August, it's a whole new.
We're going to try our best to make sure that we get that, that, as I said, it's, it depends on the complexity of the hydraulics and, and, you know, the consultants performing the work.
When is the soul sampling going to take place?
Soul sampling is only.
It's hard to make that.
But I do think it's fair, and I commend each of you to come and speak and take time out of your day, uh, because we do, I, and I would, you know, slot aside by Commissioner Kelly, we do want to be progressive and transparent, um, and if there, if it was ill, well, either way, I don't think that was intentional at all. So I think we all support that and want to move forward. Yeah.
So the reason that you're talking about that I attended was in December.
It was prior to your election.
Prior to me taking office, so I was there and I repeatedly, Tax Doc repeatedly told the citizens there that that bridge is unsafe. So there's no, there's no question, is it going to have to be, it's going to be replaced. So we know that, and you guys know that too, correct?
I was aware that, that we're being told it needs to be replaced.
Yes.
And we're not privy to some of the reports that are there, we've tried, I tried to research it to find out what that bridge, the bridge rating has continually gone down.
Yes.
But we don't have any access to any information for that. I don't need it, you may have, you may not, I don't.
I don't. Gus, has anybody determined that it's going to be a two-lane bridge? Have we ever discussed?
We haven't gotten to that one. I mean, we're, we're, again, thinking, one snap at it, got the, did you technically got?
Because I'm hearing they don't want a two-lane bridge.
Well, the.
Correct.
That's correct. My understanding is though that for the county to receive the federal funding, that that might be a stipulation of that. That's what I recall hearing.
And so to address to Gus's comment, he indicated this is new information to him today, he'd like to research it and take that, but I think we're all hearing that as a concern, so we need to be able to speak to it appropriately.
I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ken.
No action taken on that. Uh, number eight, parking lot, send a building agreement with ATT. To consider and act upon approving the written contract with ATT for use of the parking spaces across the street.
I'd like to have a, a agreement who wanted to. Now, all through some of the changes. The main question that was, that was asked about is the taxi, is the parking lot, in my mind, is changed from this. Yeah, since, since, right, my feeling was that, you know, depending on how you, I had both, how you assign parking. You know, you could, you could almost make the case if your political district wanted to segregate that property out, that parking lot out, uh, and consider just the, uh, parking spaces, that, that portion of it might need to be taxable. However, uh, I'm not so sure I agree with that anymore. I think, I mean, if it is one parking lot, public uses the parking lot, or in total will be able to use the parking lot after hours while they want to. So it still has a public purpose, I'm not that made it enough to take it out of the tax, taxable. And in any event, the tax will be minimal, but I covered this in two ways, I tried to put some language in this agreement, this probably overkill. Just, it said, it makes it clear that you've got these parking places, ATT, uh, you know, during your business hours, but afterwards, other, you know, other uses may, there may be other uses for it. I put in provisions in case of some kind of a public disaster alert. See if we need all that parking lot, we reserve the right to reserve control of that. So, uh, so I think if language like that, you know, for what it's worth, I think that, that may help guard it from taxable. In the event it is taxable, I put a provision in says if you'll pay a proportion share of the taxes, that would probably be taxable. I, I don't think that would happen, but, uh, but if the, uh, political district does say, no, we don't think we need to tax that, uh, then I, you know, then we'll say, okay, citizens, we'll just buy that with the, you know, have ATT pay a portion of it.
So, so the, the reason that we would be taxable anyway is because we're charging them?
Right. No, well, no, not seriously.
But because they've been there all this time anyway, no.
Because public, because under state law, public property is exempt from taxation. But if a private interest is using it, then, then it's, it's no longer being used for public benefit, it's being used for private. It's like if you leased an office, for example.
Or the downtown parking garage.
Yeah, uh, so, you know, then, then, then that would no longer be a public purpose and it would be taxable under state law. But there's all kinds of case law about situations like this, you know, like. And, and years ago, we wrote a, I mean, for attorney general opinion, appraisal district of our office about various properties around the city that were owned by government. And it's not whether they were taxable or not, some were, some were not, they used them. So, in fact, bottom line is you have public property, like parking lot here, if it's being used by a private entity, then that's, that may be taxable. It makes sense, but, but in a way, but that's what the law says.
And how, is it currently going to know? I'm just curious, how will they know if it works out? I mean, I'm not sure.
It's public record.
I thought I seen.
Maybe you're just going to jump on a log.
You know, I mean, remember, different public taxes, not just for the, the county, the federal taxes, anything like that. I know, I think it's going to be third of the, it's like, maybe six hundred less a year.
Six hundred a year?
Yes, it's like, it's probably not going to, I imagine they'll say no, but I'm going to, I'm going to send a copy to children and say, what do you finish?
Okay.
And, you know, this, this, this FYI, you know, I'm trying to hide anything.
Okay. I think it looks good. Is there any other questions that, that you might have solved in the chat?
Just a question in terms of the dollar amount per month, has that been?
We agreed on ten dollars, this, uh, I say we, me and the manager. We agreed on ten dollars, uh, when I say we, me and the manager, they can take him out, the ten dollars amount that she would collect at the three months at a time and bring it to the county.
Her spot.
Okay, so we need to adapt that. So how many spots are there?
Twenty-six, nine, seven?
I believe so. So we need to go through a number of these spots, every, by, you know.
Is that for you?
Typical request. Are you, are you following the same layout that I gave you the last time?
Yes, yes.
Actually, we'll be able to put in an additional row, so theirs will be the closest to the building.
Okay.
Still getting multiple, like parts of lot from the county.
Okay. The contract has an effective date of July first, so that helps it on my.
That's arbitrary, so I respect that in there.
Yes.
So a lot of this stuff I just put in and out of the way, so feel free to change.
And trust me, they've been calling to add.
So.
And Mike, just to make sure, uh, there's not an overflow situation, we have enough parking spots on the Santa Fe building for our own employees and the overflow, the traffic, the public traffic.
Correct.
Okay.
If he, if he does that, then he can do it.
I guarantee why they look at.
Okay, this is good, so, um.
We'll just fill in the lines and once those numbers get signed, you know, just little things like, do they want to use the name of AT&amp;T here or whatever that?
Yeah, we'll need to get some stickers.
And.
Where we ordered those from, but we need to make them different than the county stickers now, so. We'll, we'll come up with something. So let me, do y'all, do you got anybody opposed to me talking to the AT&amp;T people about this? Let them see this and then we'll go for it, see if there's any changes if they want.
Why wouldn't they make up their own stick? Why do we have to do that?
It's our property.
Yep. Their cars.
Most of them are gas, too.
Well, just like, make their own.
I think we.
They're, they're less than a dollar a piece, I've already checked.
Oh, we don't have that kind of money in the county.
Well, you're talking my language now.
Okay. I think we're, I think we're okay.
Do I have a question? Who's gonna police it if somebody's parking an AT&amp;T spot? I mean, you know, usually you have where it says, what we told at your expense, we can't do it, but if they're renting those spots, and it's a vague question, can they call and have some, have a homecoming come pick up?
We have, we have a constable, can a constable do that?
I didn't want to get into that, so what I did is say, I said, if no one's in your parking spot and you can, you can park in another county place on the lot and we gonna give you a hard time about it. That's, that's how I deal with that.
Well, could a constable enforce that?
Yeah, but I think it's easier, by the way, it's easier.
I was just saying, if there's spots, I mean, you wouldn't have to number it.
Yeah.
Put, let the, put AT&amp;T, hang it on there, the, the AT&amp;T spots and if they have an issue, don't call the sheriff's office, they can call, you know, hey, these are our spots. And let it be their problem, not.
Well, that's what I'm trying to see. I really don't want to get into business of police and park, their parking lot.
Well, just for the record, the, the manager over there told me several times that she has no problem with us towing, or someone called a towing truck. Not us, but someone, she said, she doesn't have a problem. She just begged them to stop parking in our parking lot, begged them to stop, and she just watched the tow trucks come and she's laughing, she said, go ahead, take it. There's nothing she can do, she won't, they won't listen to her, so this is gonna be a challenge for them.
We can use different colors of strapping to indicate their response, as well, with versus yellows.
Yeah, just give them loads since the AT&amp;T.
On one color.
But we will tell them that it's their responsibility to park their spot, don't go there, so.
That's all I'm overthinking, be towing one vehicle.
So Judge, you would like to visit with them about the contract to make sure there's no changes prior to actions?
Yes, okay. So what they get action in two weeks?
Okay.
So, okay? Number nine, local government corporations who provide updates in the local government corporation?
Um, the update that I have is dated six thirteen, that we are scheduled to meet this Wednesday again. Um, a couple of significant items, so the hotel building permit and commitments are due at the end of June, June thirtieth to be exact, and that is currently on track. Uh, the RFQ for the retail space went out and was awarded, the principal on that is Bob Garrett, so this is the individual in charge of all the retail space at the bottom ground floor of the parking garage that's scheduled to be built. So they wanted one principal agent to go out and, uh, get potential leases to come in and fill that, whatever that ends up being. And there are restrictions in the contract of what it can't be leased as, um, but that has been awarded. Uh, there's been a lot of discussion recently about the RFQ for the ball field. Uh, there is one individual that bid on that, for lack of a better word, um, it is currently who we have in our current ball field, uh, but as you know, that continues to be discussed at the city level, uh, and what that future might be. So I wanted to share that. The TexDOT streetscape project, they indicated roughly a July start on Buchanan, it's about ninety percent complete. This does involve us at the county, there are some of our, um, portions of property that is slated and included in the streetscape that TexDOT, uh, gave. And so they indicated that they have reached out to the city to make sure, uh, because I'm always asking that, do you feel good about that, Mike? Okay, all right. Because I know based on our strategic plans and timing may be different, but I did want to pass that along. And then that LGC, which is really funding from the tiers, it will be in charge of the streetscape, four side, all four sides of the parking garage, that's tiers dollars that is supporting that going through LGC, um, and three sides of the hotel, the streetscape. Um, and then presented a parking garage budget, and so that's being vetted out of what it can be, what it, what it could be. Um, I personally am a little disappointed, it's not as progressive as I, I would think it needs to be from a technology perspective, um, since it is gonna be a central key point to the downtown schematic, uh, I really hope that we would engage a little more technology in it, but, um, and, and not have it feel like such a parking garage, and I've seen some really creative things, but, um, that's currently not in the budget. And again, we're scheduled to meet, um, this Wednesday, Coca-Cola officially moved in, for those that attended, uh, their ceremony, they've officially moved in and then start, some of that demolition will start soon, and the demolition obviously is already completed for, uh, the XL project. More to come. Thank you.
Uh, number ten, baseball stadium, to consider an act upon allowing road and bridge department to take one or those of dirt and sand to the baseball stadium to fill in holes and come back to it.
Yeah, I, I received a call from Stephanie Tucker and, uh, she was needing a load of clean soil or sand to help fill in some, uh, some holes or those spots. And I talked to Judge and I didn't want to make that decision and get in hot water like someone else I knew. But anyway, um, we decided we better bring it here and so we just, like approval to let, at a road and bridge, they've got some soil out there that they can just load up and take in.
You do have some?
Yes.
Would, uh, would they have to pay for that? I mean, would they, it just gonna be a courtesy? Yeah. Yeah, I understand.
It's our infield, so.
Okay, so y'all, have y'all talked to Stephanie about that suspension?
Uh, no, I just talked to Mr. Church about it.
Okay.
But this is not out of the ordinary, we've done it before.
Okay.
We used to do a lot of, uh, trash cleanup and, uh, weeds and stuff like that out there some time ago. I mean, it, it, it's just been a while since we've been out there, but we just patched and we've done a lot of stuff out there because it is Potter County property.
So it was significant holes in it?
Uh, I haven't been out there.
I don't know if it's holes, it's just low spots.
And, yeah, that's, and there's low spots everywhere, but not on our roads.
Dave, do we have any issue there? Dave, any issue with this?
Uh, I, I think you go too far, but I, this is probably not too far.
I think maybe you might be talking to the other board.
It's taking off service to public purpose.
Yeah.
Yes, and not a private purpose. Oh, it's definitely a public.
Since it's leased, or, yeah, that would, that's a, that's a point we'll take, since it's leased property, we need to, and I think somebody's mentioned something about it being our, our ballpark, uh, taking care of the, preserving county property may be one of the.
Can I like to be one of our commissioners?
Yes, I would, uh, excuse me, we're gonna start over. I move that we approve allowing road and bridge department to take at least one note of that soil up to the Potter County baseball stadium, uh, to preserve and improve our, our property.
Is that sufficient?
Yes.
I, I, I second what was, uh, this, uh, Sebastian, that's an ongoing problem, we're going to have? I'm sorry, if there's a, if there's a, if there's an ongoing problem?
Uh, like I said, I haven't been out there, but, uh, we, in the past, we've done work out there, it's just like a pothole, maybe taking materials so they can fill it in, is what I look at it as. But we've done, like I said, uh, the prior lease, they left a bunch of trash all around the, uh, outside of the fence, we took all that to the junkyard, we sprayed the weeds in the back, uh, we patched under the awnings, you know, where the public walks in and out, uh, we fixed a gate out there, we've done so much work out there, like I said, it's, I don't know the red tape of it, it is Potter County property, as far as I know, we've always done it, we fixed the, the pylons on the outside of the ticket booths, we pulled the fence out and put those barriers there if somebody drives through, I mean, we've done a lot of work out there, passed, so.
In the past, so the last been how many years ago?
Uh, was when Manuel was alive, and that was the last time we was out there probably.
I asked the question because I, I'm a little bit concerned with Dave's mind, if we may go too far or if we lost too.
The issue is, you know, the issue is we're leasing, if you go too far, then you're looking, they're using, that's what we're using public property for private investment, because baseball is a public property entity. Uh, and so there's, you always have to kind of, uh, consider, you know, to what extent are we preserving our property, to what extent are we really enhancing, uh, you know, the property to make profit. You know, it's something that has to be planned for you. Frankly, I have less problem with that than just about, than just about anything, but I do think, curious point is well-taken, we do need to make sure that there's a public purpose or purpose order to avoid that. It's okay if, if they benefit from it, in other words, they, if the team has a better field playing on it, you don't have to completely stay away to benefit private concern, but, but the public benefit has to outweigh that private concern. And I, and I think taking care of the ball field itself is, is about as close as anything, you know? And, and Sebastian's right, more knows we've done it out there, I don't even, for you here, that we've, we've done it before, so.
But we're, we're just taking the dirt out there and dumping it, and they're gonna fix and fill it themselves, so.
And I do think it's a, a call to just have it on the agenda for full discussion, so everyone's aware and then can always discern of what they think is public versus private, um, and, and how to differentiate that. So I do think it's a good call, but I'm hearing you that we've got the dirt, we're just dropping it down. Okay.
Okay, I have a motion in a second, follow the paper, Rachel Ryan. Mike, you have your Potter County project, what was the question?
Just to make you aware, on the, uh, strategic landing committee, we'll be meeting with the architect this afternoon, and then we will be holding our citizens orientation meeting, and then tomorrow we'll be holding tours with the committee and the citizens to serve the citizens. You know, damaged projects, non-emergency, uh, JP three O West Town should be near completion within the next few days. Uh, paragrams, we are still waiting on, wait, not David, a public company, uh, basically IDIQ to resume to some calls on, on those projects out there. Of course, fire station three, I'll be here to report in just a moment on the ninety-five percent. What I need to do is make you aware of an issue that I presented, uh, last year, to the LED lighting on top of the Santa Fe building, we completed the project, everything worked fine, we started getting into our schedule changes, some changes in the lighting sequences, at that time, we started encountering problems. We worked with our local electrical contractor, they went through, and this company has spent day and night up here to represent Potter County. Coloronics is the name of the company out of California, basically, uh, they were willing to work with us, they were gonna replace the light fixtures and then they backed out of us, so we've been trying to keep the commissioners' court and the county attorney from getting involved, but we're at a point right now, I have scheduled a meeting for this coming Wednesday, Commissioner Kelly and Hade Camp is, has to be present with the company, hoping they show up, and our local contractors that's been helping us regarding this issue, they have now sent a response back to me within the last probably two or three weeks, denying any of its third fault. Uh, I think y'all spent a little over thirty-two thousand dollars on that lighting system up there, so gotta see where we're at.
So, so Mike, why would they initially in favor of, as they come out, they, or is they backed out?
I, I think it has a lot to do with different people becoming involved, they made every recommendation that our electrical contractor has followed, changes, things to be done to the lighting system. It was even at a point where Coloronics hired a private, uh, person to come out, that this is his specialty, he comes out and makes the recommendations that they had recommended. Things would start to work fine and then they would go bad. So we're at a point right now, I think it's different, uh, people within the company is just now getting involved, saying their opinion is, Potter County created all these problems, our electrical contractor, you did, so that is something we're hoping to sit around the table and discuss, and I'll make them aware this week, uh, if we can come to a resolution to get them replaced at no expense to Potter County, then we'll present it to the court through Dave to take whatever action.
Thanks, Mike. Number twelve, equipment purchased, to consider an act upon producing Argo amphibious vehicle from NBC Cars Inc. in, uh, thirty-one thousand nine hundred dollars to replace a unit considered a total loss by insurance, funding will be from the current insurance money, we pay the sheriff's office, but let's watch your funds.
Uh, this was the vehicle that I let you know about two weeks ago, that was considered a total loss by the insurance. We've received our insurance check, minus our deductible, and, and we bought the, the old unit for six hundred fifty dollars for parts, too. Um, so we need to go ahead and replace it, um, any, any funds that are funded, the sheriff has agreed to take out, just for insurance.
And what is this vehicle used for again?
For the river, it's, it's basically, won't get stuck anywhere, but it'll drown if the currents, you know, but it, it'll get across anything at the, at the river, except when the currents.
And this one did drown, is that, the one that's.
It turned over in the, in the fast-moving water. Our partner had hold of it and with the rope and it got turned and then the water pushed it.
So there are there, and I'm just, I'm thinking from a liability, and obviously we've had some really tragic things happen this year, um, with water currents, where are the legal parameters of us in those conditions? If the, if the equipment drowned, then anyone in it potentially could, and so I'm wondering if some of our, our staff are going through this, like, is it safe for them and are they in conditions, or where is the line drawn? I guess is probably the question of, it's not safe for us to go in. I feel like to me, the equipment is, is minor compared to the big picture of what could have happened if, if someone was in there and, and again, I know we've had some really tough things happen, some of the water currents.
It's like anything, it's, I mean, you drop our vehicle as fast, we could be liable to have an accident, you know, doing that. It's, on this thing here, you learn, you know, that it's not gonna go into the fast trend, so you don't go in the fast trend with it. It was used at that time, I was actually the one driving it, and then with, uh, to recover the, you know, body of the three-year-old, so, uh, we did that, and then all the way back across, that's when it turned over because of the current. So it's like having any equipment, though, you're gonna, you, you find the, you know, how far it goes, you don't go that far, you're trying not to, but it's concerned with the safety and what's, what's the big issue is. You put yourself out there because of the safety of somebody else.
So you're lucky you got it on.
I had a life that, that, uh.
And I assume that equipment is probably, uh, be utilized periodically, if we're still doing the mud dogs and the, uh, the, the.
During that time, too. But it has the tracks on it to where it won't get, you know, like quicksand and some of that stuff, it doesn't get stuck in that type of deal. Where the, of the fire department out there that day. the, of the fire department out there that day, we couldn't even get vehicles to, to where, you know, this deal occurred. I mean, everybody was stuck in the mud. And we're, like I said, the, the Argo, it does get there, but again, it can't go through that fast current. But it is very useful. That's the only vehicle that, that we can, that we've had so far. We've got four-wheelers, we've got the, the Rides, and it gets stuck, but it's with the tracks and that and stuff.
Okay, I have a motion.
My question is, uh, it's for you.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor, Rachel Wright. Five to zero. Thank you. Number thirteen, adoption, unconflicted interest questionnaire. To consider an act upon adopting an unconflicted interest questionnaire that will be included in all formal solicitations and placed on the website for current or potential vendors. This is to comply with Texas Local Government Code, section one seventy-six, point zero zero six.
Um, this is a little housekeeping. We already have a, a clause in our general terms and conditions that says a vendor is required to fill out a questionnaire. Um, for some recent legislative talks and changing this, I, I found out that the, the questionnaire actually has to be adopted by the court. And I've looked, and I cannot find an instance where the court has adopted this questionnaire. So then the state created this, and other counties use this, so we comply with that section. So I, I need you all to act to adopt this. So this could be the official questionnaire if there's conflict with vendors or.
I make a motion that we approve the conflict of interest questionnaire that will be included in all formal solicitations and to comply with Texas Local Government Code, section one seventy-six, point zero zero six.
Second.
I have a motion, second, all in favor, Rachel Wright. Five to zero.
Thank you.
Number fourteen, Fire Station Three project. Do you have a report with Project Stephen Cooper, Inc. concerning a ninety-five percent construction documents and OPC and taking any action necessary? Good morning.
Good morning. Everyone ready to hang up, Mike?
Thank you.
Paul, we have a question. I'm sorry.
I'm used to it.
This morning, we might be reviewing the, the project, the fire station number three, North Sancy, working the ninety-five percent cemental. And hopefully after this approval, we'll continue and move to construction documents, hundred percent CDs scheduled for August. Just wanted to let you know that we are on track and on schedule. Um, in the next few minutes, I know you guys have a full set that we've given. It's about fifty-something sheets. Uh, what I'm doing is condensing it down to about three. Maybe I can get this in a brief five-minute conversation. Uh, overall, talk about the site and the building work. So on your screen, I believe, right now, if y'all guys have a site plan, uh, it should be sheet C one oh two. You know, like I said, I'm going to try to shorten this as, as much as possible, because there's a lot of information on all these sheets. So I'm looking at sheet C one oh two. Basically, the work on this, uh, is general grading. What we've done on this site, the, the general site's about two-point-six, two-point-eight acres. It's located on the east side of North Sancy. It's about three-hundred-and-thirty by three-hundred-and-seventy-five feet, uh, rectangle. Uh, general site work on this is a grading to raise the building pad up itself. The building is oriented north and south. And what we did is bring up the building so we can get proper drainage to the road and also back to the east. Uh, approximately about two and a half to three feet. I believe it's about a three-foot raise on the pad to get the proper drainage on the site. There are two access points on the site, uh, one of which is a twenty-six foot wide. It's on the southernmost portion. Uh, this access gains you to the public and employee parking, also to the drive to the rear of the building. The second access is mainly for the egress where the trucks themselves, fire station trucks, that go out onto Sancy. Uh, these areas of access on the, from Sancy to the site are actually concrete, and I'll also, also with the aprons in front of and behind of the apparatus bay. Now, there is a portion of that site work, which is the parking lot and the drive to the rear in a shaded area in the rear for a truck turnaround, is also designated as a base bid of concrete, but we have an alternate of asphalt parking. Uh, the reason for this, the main reason is obviously the cost. Uh, concrete craving costs about twice as much, but it lasts twice as long. And in the timeframe, you're looking at, you know, concrete paving being about forty years with asphalt being about twenty. Uh, the price and maintenance is definitely a second factor, uh, of your asphalt and the use of the roadways and the turning on this, uh, this portion. Uh, usually you might have to do some maintenance on asphalt every eight to ten years, and you're probably looking at about a dollar per foot, depending on how much wear and tear and use this machine gives. The rest of the site work, uh, there's utilities of electric and gas. The county will be providing a, a water well and septic system. The landscaping is, uh, future work. There, this current stove, there will be no landscaping on this. It'll be provided by the county in the future. And let me see, so I was going to see if we want to go to the elevation section, but I think I want to stay on this, uh, still this one slide. It actually shows the building, like I said, being oriented north and south. Uh, this new building is a pre-engineered metal building. It's got a metal arc panel on the exterior. Uh, it's approximately one-hundred-and-thirty-two by fifty. Uh, it's located on the west side. We tried to locate it on the, the westernmost side of the property so we can keep the paving and concrete down as much as possible. Um, on the exterior, we have three, the main entrance of the, the, the public facility is on the south side. That's where the public parking is. It also has a canopy for that particular area. Uh, on the east side, we also have three access doors, which is behind a secured fence. Uh, as you drive through, through the parking lot and around to the rear of the building, we have an automatic sliding gate, an eight-foot tall, eight-foot-tall chambering fence, uh, at which your trucks can keep that in and be secured inside. Uh, on that same side of the elevation, uh, we have the apparatus bay doors and the exterior doors that you can get into, not only with the trucks, but mainly. On the west side, we only have one man door, and then obviously the apparatus doors to get you out on the Sancy for, uh, for service. If we go to the next sheet, uh, will pop up, is just the elevations again, I'm condensing this down from three, from fifty-three to three. Uh, this is an engineered building. It's got an exterior skin of metal arc panels. Uh, the roof is also an arc panel. That's a profile for a metal wall panel. The exterior color currently is a, is white and all trimmed, including any of the windows and doors. Aluminum doors are to be a bright red. The actual hollow metal doors around, uh, the building are going to be painted white. And again, this is from front order. We've reviewed this with Mr. Pat, and, and he's finalized the, the exterior colors, but the, again, those could change throughout this process. Also, on the exterior, we're providing a baller to warn all the entries to the apparatus bay for to protect the building. Uh, normally those are located on either side of your bay doors. And there's a one-site light being provided on the east side to enlighten the turning, uh, the turning portion of the concrete paving in the back. And the building is aluminum, ball pack lights all the way around on the north, south, east and west. So, in, uh, pretty straightforward, to be honest. We'll go to the floor plan, which is the next. Uh, basically, we have a, uh, an engineered metal building. It's separated into two parts, an apparatus bay and living quarters. Uh, the lower level is approximately about sixty-eight hundred square feet, of that, of which is about four thousand nine hundred is the apparatus bay itself. The other portion of the lower level is part of the living quarters, which contains three offices, uh, a toilet, unisex toilet, small kitchen, a day room and a fitness area. The area above is at the upper level is, uh, is accessed by staircase and an elevator, and has one unisex toilet, two showers and a sleeping area, along with a, a second day room or meeting area on the second floor. And it's approximately seventeen hundred square feet. Interior finish is, uh, on the living quarter side, we're looking at a two-by construction, either two-by-four or two-by-six wooden construction with TJ Anna Joyce and wood subfloor, uh, covered with a gypsum board product and painted. On the apparatus bay, we will have a eight-foot-tall plywood skin up to that level for the firemen to u- utilize and also try to, uh, I guess salvage the metal building insulation so to protect it against the, the daily use. And above that will be just exposed insulation above that in the apparatus bay. Uh, in the apparatus bay, in the mechanical area, you also have the storage and laundry. Those walls will have a fiber reinforced panel. Again, it's just used for durability in those areas and, uh, because of the high-risk areas. The living quarter size is mainly painted. Uh, all the wet areas or the toilet areas and the shower rooms are going to have tile on the walls, only a wings coat up to five feet with painted walls up above. And we'll have tiled floor in those areas. But the remainder of the lower level will be sealed concrete and a suspended ceiling tile, along with the second floor is very similar, painted walls, suspended ceiling tile, although we'll have a vinyl tile on the floor since it does have a wood subfloor. Finish is, uh, millwork-wise, we just have a plastic laminate. We do have a finished board that we presented to the county, and it is still under review, uh, which you can see up front here. That's pretty much, uh, the building and the site work in a nutshell. I know there's a, a lot of sheets there. There could be a lot of questions. I wanted to try to keep that short and, and sweet. I know you guys have seen this before. Uh, I'm going to briefly kind of go over the OPC, and again, I'm going to review this very briefly. You guys have seen this before also. Uh, I'm going to highlight that the, the last OPC was dated June fifteenth, twenty-fifteen. And on the very last page of your OPC that we present to you, I did an evaluation from the November, I believe it's third. November third, twenty-fourteen versus the OPC that's currently that you have now. Our current OPC is at one million six hundred sixty-two thousand eight hundred eighty-five. It's a few thousand dollars less than the previous on April twenty-ninth. Uh, knowing there's a lot of questions, again, I'm not going to go re- review all thirty-three divisions. And that's why I wanted to provide the evaluation at the end, to kind of highlight, uh, these dozen or so divisions and see about the increase and decrease. Uh, I want to go over each one of those briefly, and then afterwards, hopefully answer any questions you have over the OPC or the project as a whole. On Division One, that is basically a, a general increase. That depends on how much the, the general, uh, construction cost is. So if, if the construction cost goes up, uh, there's always going to be an increase or decrease on that, that Division One, because it's just based on the percentage. Division Three was, um, is concrete. Uh, interior stairs, what we did is we ended up changing the concrete stairs and also we changed, we changed the concrete stairs to wooden stairs. And on the trench drain, we had some reductions, because instead of doing individual drains for each individual apparatus bay, we did one linear going, uh, north and south. So it gave us a reduction, a, a decrease in the price. Division Five is metals, and basically that gave us a decrease because of how we designed the trench drain and the frame lengths themselves. So we had a small decrease in that also. Division Six, we, is wood and plastics. Basically, an increase after going through the design from the perimeter from November to your ninety-five percent construction set right now to include all the design joists, uh, eye joists, floor joists, that you have floor-to-floor and ceilings. We also went to a mezzanine, a wooden mezzanine inside the apparatus bay, and, and looked at a cost comparison of, of actually having a lean to pre-engineered metal building versus including the mezzanine inside. So we do have an increase there. On Division Eight, we can see there's a decrease because in the original, the overhead doors is going to be, uh, provided installed by the county, so that was removed from the budget. Division Nine is finishing, and again, uh, it's concrete. We're sealing most of the floors. Uh, we have an alternate for one of the sports bar in the, uh, fitness area, but again, that's not on the base bid. It will be considered an alternate. But overall, with the finishes of the FRP, any tiling, painting, we have a, a small increase there also. Division Ten is specialties. It's mainly meeting requirements and accessibility. You can see I've had to add in some brag bars, uh, for accounting for this project. Uh, we are on the twenty-twelve IBC, and we are required to meet accessibility required by Texas Accessibility Standards twenty-twelve. So these items were added, uh, during the design process. Uh, the windows, uh, also were caved on the upper level. We needed to have a second egress. Uh, some of the windows were added, uh, along the side and on top for those egresses on the second level. Division Thirteen is, is basically a specialties, uh, the pre-engineered metal building itself. There is an increase on it, uh, due to the twenty-twelve energy codes. We're required to have a continuous insulation on the outside of a building. You know, on a metal building, that's pretty hard to do. So one of the ways is to use an insulated metal panel, and that twenty-seven thousand is that's increased for that. Only wise, you see an extra increase. We had, uh, we added some urinals and four sinks and four drains in each of the wet areas. So you'll see an increase in that also. And on the lighting, I think the proposed November was, uh, there was an alternate for an LED lighting package in the November, uh, budget. And since we're in twenty-twelve and during the energy code, that we went ahead and used the LED package, uh, to meet those standards for, for this project. Your biggest, uh, you'll see that your biggest increase was the, the actual paving increase, the original paving increase, or the original paving design was for the paving apron to be in front and in back of the apparatus base, along with the concrete, uh, egresses or, or access from the streets. And the rest of that pavement, the rest of that, I guess you could call it driveways, parking and turn lane were to be done by the county, uh, whichever way that was to be scheduled. Since then, we've changed that to full concrete paving with an alternate on the asphalt. So you, you're going to see, that's why the, there's a biggest increase on that. Uh, the, the second thing that increased some of this, and, uh, I'm not even back to Division Twenty-Six, uh, the, the emergency generator itself, uh, the scheduled price they had on the November was three hundred fifty dollars a kilowatt generator. And I think we, uh, after going through the requirements, we can still use a hundred kilowatt generator for emergency backup, but the installation and, and actual positive equipment is more like five hundred and fifty per kilowatt. So that, that increased on Twenty-Six, but we also had to decrease because we took off side lights from the last one, too. So overall, again, uh, looking back from last month's to this month's, we had a decrease of almost six thousand dollars from the last OPC. I'm not too sure that took five months, but I hope it did.
A couple of questions if I may.
Right.
So Division Twenty-Six, the three dollars, um, added, is that because of the footprint, three, three dollars per square foot? Is that because of the footprint? Um, but now you're having to move to this bigger, uh, piece of equipment than kilowatt, moving from three fifty to five fifty?
Uh, just from the generator itself, because we're dealing with that line on.
I have Division Twenty-Six.
That line on, again, the unit cost was three fifty per kilowatt. Uh, when you called, when we called up our local manufacturers here and the local reps, basically the price of the equipment is three fifty a kilowatt.
Okay.
So you have to get it installed. So this is, uh, where we had to add, add some cost for installation.
And then on Division Thirty-two, right underneath that, the concrete paving that you discussed, that originally the vision was on the apron, and the rest would be handled by the county, that has shifted. What, what is the reason for that shift?
When we, uh, talked with Sabby about it, we talked to him briefly, and we talked to Sabby, he felt like if we could get a contractor to do it, it would be a much better job than, than them doing with, uh, steel coat, top work.
Sebastian, is it the equipment that we don't have or the manpower?
We're talking about the overlay of the.
Concrete.
Doing the, doing the concrete.
All the concrete.
Parking lots and stuff.
Yeah, the concrete. We, we don't, yeah, we don't have the equipment or the, the knowledge to do concrete, because if you mess it up, then it's just wasted money. But, uh, the asphalt, the steel coat, for those big trucks, it just wouldn't last. It needs to be overlaid. We have an old, uh, a lay-down machine, but that machine's not, it's just not, it's so old, it's not capable of doing a good job like they need, as far as for those big trucks.
The kind of ability to, 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 you know, almost twice the amount of power as well as I'm doing. We have that. We do, we do better at roads and parking lots, way better at roads.
So again, I guess my final question, um, for the commissioners that sit on this committee, what is the real budget? When will these dollars stop? Um, because I, in all fairness, and I think you've done a wonderful job of highlighting them, so I really appreciate that, because a lot of times that isn't the case. So thank you for being transparent and forthcoming. But I don't, I don't really know what dollars we're really working with at this point, um, so that we have fairness around the parameters. What, what is that? Or is it unlimited? And we come back and look at it?
The hundred percent OPC will be presented to the court next, but, uh, the numbers that the architect to give would be places at our grocery list. And by the way, Commissioner, we produced a grocery just by one hundred and eleven thousand. So. So, uh, the final number, you're really not gonna know it. Oh, when we enter into projects, we enter into projects with an opinion of cost. A general contractor will present your cost based off what the architect will implement. Wonder if you get your keys to the building, as we don't know the actual final cost. I'm not trying to get around any questions.
No, but, but even a, an appropriate opinion of cost, because I think what, what I'm struggling with is that all of the presentations, I, I think we all feel like we probably need something like that. And then we keep moving forward and saying, well, we're putting so much money in, we might as well add this, and we might as well add this. And so then we all of a sudden get well over a two-million-dollar budget, which I believe we will exceed the two-million-dollar budget on this project. So I'm just trying to think of what are our true numbers?
I think that the hundred percent O P C would be the best opinion that anybody has of this project.
And that's fair, thank you.
I do have one question, on division ten, would you flip that, I don't mean disrespect, but do I have to have grab bars in the shower and the shower seats? Code requires, code requires. It could be a B A A compliance.
I B C states, uh, this is a type, this is an R two building, residential almost type building, but although it is a, a fire station, uh, it does still have to re- require to meet accessibility guidelines, which is outlawed in the TOS twenty-twelve, Texas Accessibility Standards.
Someone categorizes this as an R two semi-residential building?
Dorm, dorm.
The dorm.
The dorm areas. If it was purely, if it was something different, if we didn't have sleeping quarters in it, then we could probably categorize it as something else. That does not, uh, relinquish you of meeting accessibility guidelines.
Sure, no, I just, in terms of category.
It is a different category for a building. So you, you're required to meet those, either way. There are some standards you don't have to meet, but ninety percent of them you still have to meet. And it is a public building.
One question, could you make the print a little smaller?
I can pretty go big for that, thank you.
Well, the thirty by forty-two's wouldn't fit on your desk, so, and each of y'all having those, y'all be flashing back and forth. We do have electronic copies of those, and we can send those to your, you can view those at your, your regular.
All that you can give you want to get, can't it?
I'll try it. Yes, sir?
Thank you.
Okay, do we need to take any action today on this, do we need to, now just.
Yeah, we're to raise some questions.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, number fifteen, employment items, to consider an act upon calling women out of the women's range to hire a Danielle Powell as a replacement for Pablo Diggins at the Center of War in elections, in recent hours, between thirty-two hours and twenty hours during the period of six fifteen, it's in nine-four fifteen, for Casey Bledsoe as part-time victim. Do I have that motion?
A little bit, uh, the, the, the items that, uh, that, uh, point.
Have a motion, second all in favor, raise your hand. Jail report is four-hundred-and-seventy-nine, in jail, ninety-six females. Do we have any children still?
With our max, that's it. So we are maxed out.
Okay, number seventeen, insurance, seven.
I do have something, and I'm gonna show you some pictures of some property damage we sustained last week.
Which building?
The JP three inspection building. Texas Inspector. And I don't, the damages, the damage isn't as bad as we first thought, so, but I still wanted to show you pictures really quick. I don't know why it's not zooming out, but, um, the, the saving grace is three of these garage doors, uh, are already being replaced because of the hail project, so we're not gonna have to replace those. But last Sunday night, there was, uh, wind and bushland that hit about ninety-six miles an hour. And on that big building out there, it actually collapsed one of our doors and bent the other ones out because of, it was so strong. So this is the, uh, east side, the west side of the building, thanks, Mike. And this door is actually closed right now, and that bottom panel is blown out underneath, um, that you're seeing right there. There's a picture of the inside, so it, it actually bungled it under and, and it, but that door is already scheduled to be replaced. We were afraid there might be some more damage to the rails and around the frame, but we had a garage company look at it, and there, there isn't actually. So it's just gonna be the panels and the rollers that are replaced, which is already scheduled to be done on that side. Um, on the other side of the building, though, um, this is where the wind would have been going in, it actually creased them outwards. So this is the, uh, this is the east side of the building, there's an inside picture of that door. I believe there's the exterior. There's the exterior, so it's actually creased outwards. So those, so two of those doors on the west side are gonna have to be replaced, and that's not being replaced under the hailstorm project. So we're working on getting quotes, but I don't think it's gonna exceed our twenty-five thousand dollar deductible, but I will need to be able to take that money from somewhere. So, um, I don't know if you hear anything about the contingency or.
What about the insure, um, the insurance loan item?
I don't believe there's twelve-five thousand dollars there.
Okay. Do we know how much is in there? Okay, thank you, David.
Do you need to have a motion or something to proceed with those?
Well, I, you know, I can bring the cost back in two weeks, and I, I want you to decide as soon as possible.
Okay, we have no executive session today, you may, nothing. Do you have any items for next time?
I do have one item, uh, next, uh, next, uh, meeting, I hope to have a report on the, the A G journey, possibly, which is tomorrow. The, the commissioners will go with us. We, we, we're gonna be in law for tomorrow.
We'll bring back the eighteen things.
Yes.
Judge, if I can just add the L G C again, because we'll have a meeting this Wednesday, so I just keep everybody informed.
Okay. That's all, there is.